Did you guys get water?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The Clinton City Council will please come to order, will begin tonight with Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, no. I guess they weren't here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At least we're still listening.
Thank you. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
McGraw.
Here.
Alasy.
Here.
Cannel.
Here.
Shimmers.
Here.
Oder.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Alice.
Your Honor, I move to dispense with the reading of the regular City Council meeting and committee of the whole minutes of December 12th, 2017, and may be approved as published on December 26th, 2017.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Alice.
Your Honor, I move to dispense with the reading of the special City Council meeting minutes of December 19th, 2017, and may be approved as published on January 2nd, 2018.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight, a proclamation declaring January 2018 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and the proclamation will be read tonight by Sister Marcella Narlock.
Good evening. Whereas human trafficking is defined as the illegal trade of people using force, fraud, or coercion typically for the purposes of forced labor or sexual exploitation for commercial gain, and whereas the practice of enslaving human beings as property still exists today all across the nation, and whereas globally there are approximately 25 million people living as slaves right now, more than at any other time in all of history. According to the International Labor Organization, human trafficking is a $32 billion industry, second only to illicit drugs and organized crime, and whereas in 2014, President Barack Obama, by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution and the laws of the United States proclaimed January as the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Now therefore, I, Mark S. Volich, Mayor of the City of Clinton, Iowa, call upon all businesses, community organizations, schools, faith-based groups, families, and all Clintonians to recognize the vital role each of us can play in ending all forms of slavery and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Clinton, Iowa, does hereby proclaim and recognize the month of January 2018 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and thanks the Clinton-Franiscans Anti-Human Trafficking Committee for all of the work it is doing to educate the public about human trafficking. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Clinton to be affixed this ninth day of January 2018. Mark S. Volich, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we leave this proclamation, Councilmember Shimmers has a couple of comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Having spent a lot of, good, a lot of part of my other career, if you will, investigating human trafficking and looking into the pain of victims and having the joy of capturing the suspects, and then coming out here and working with the Clinton-Franiscans for a couple of years now, I would like to encourage any department, or any agency, or any civilian group to get involved one way or another in training, or if they want somebody to come out and talk to them. There's a lot of programs coming up this month, and it's a great opportunity, and I will tell you, working with the Franciscans for a better part of two years, it's growing. We had a huge meeting today, and it would be nice to see it grow even more. We've got truck drivers, we've got all kinds of people involved. This is not a law enforcement problem, this is a problem involving the community. So, we'd just like to encourage those here and those watching on TV to come out to a Franciscans meeting and get involved one way or another. It's for a good cause. Thank you.
Did you want to mention your social justice home test?
Well, as long as you mention that, sure. January 25th at 6:30 PM, there is a movie that the Franciscans are putting on, and it's at the, help me out here, Clinton Community College, and there's going to be a forum afterwards that we would love to have people come out and talk. It's free. You can't beat that, and I believe there's popcorn being served as well. So, if you've never seen or even heard about what this is all about, this is a great opportunity, and I could tell you stories all night, but that's not why we're here. Please come out to that training. I know there's more training coming up, but if you would like even training for yourselves or to learn more, please give the Franciscans a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on with our meeting. Surprisingly, we have no public hearings tonight, so I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that has any audience comment. No one's turned in a sheet, but if you would like to make a comment to us, now is your opportunity. In hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Alice.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on now to motions, resolutions, and ordinances. Councilmember Gasman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the claims we have be received, approved, and placed on file.
Second. Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that council consider an ordinance for the third time.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chapter 114 of the Clinton-Iowa Code of Ordinances. I move that the ordinance, under consideration, be placed on its final passage and adopted.
A second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please? Oh. TV just, we can still have a roll call, even though our monitor has just gone off.
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Cannel.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for consideration for the third time.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chapter 159 of the Clinton-Iowa Code of Ordinances. I move this ordinance be placed on its final passage and adopted.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Oder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for the third consideration.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the Clinton-Iowa Code of Ordinances. I move that it be adopted on its final passage.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McGraw. Oh, that's the one they added on.
I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the vacation of Wild Rose Circle South.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes. Councilmember Seeley.
Are we still waiting on information, like appraisal and all that stuff?
So, Steve Howes contacted us. It was our mistake because they're trying to close the first week of February, so the appraisals are going to be coming in, but we wanted to set the public hearing, get those appraisals prior to January 30th, which will bring this back on the 30th for the public hearing.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our motions, resolutions, and ordinances for tonight. We have no unfinished business, so I will turn to Councilmember Alasy.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn to 7:00 PM, January 30th, 2018.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yep.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned, and we will move immediately into the Clinton City Council Committee of the Whole for January 9th. I will call that meeting to order, and we'll have a roll call whenever our city clerk is ready.
Councilmember Gasman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
McGraw.
Here.
Alasy.
Here.
Cannel.
Here.
Shimmers.
Yes. Here.
Here. Thank you. Our first item tonight is the Committee of the Whole Meeting Schedule Adjustment. Our city administrator, Matt.
Certainly. So, thank you, Your Mayor. So, as you know, right now, we have, the first Tuesday of the month is always considered a Committee of the Whole. Last year, we actually had three that were canceled altogether, and then we had two that had only two or three items that went less than 15 minutes. So, one of the things we thought was to become organized in my first year, which we hopefully did, but then to be able to bring to you during the two council meetings and the two Committee of the Holes, the second and the fourth weeks, to be able to get everything on those agendas and be able to do them without staying too late. With this is, we're looking to basically not have those scheduled, but if we require one, then to schedule and put it on, based on if we hit a heavy rush of a bunch of stuff that needs to get to a Committee of the Whole. I wanted to bring that for discussion today, as well as, you know, fully utilizing our boards and commissions that are out there already, and having them just as involved so that, you know, we don't maybe have to talk so long on a topic, because we can talk about it in those boards and commissions as well. So, just want to kind of bring it up for you guys, just thoughts and opinions on that.
You just wanted to give us a break, didn't you?
I did. I did.
One last meeting a month.
Well, this is how it was, probably Paul and I, when we first started, and we would be more in the committees than we would be here. It would be brought here than from the committees.
If you notice, a lot of the meetings we've had, we've had one, two items that really we could have put them on another agenda. But if we'd have some major economic development come along that we needed to talk about, then it does give me the opportunity to call a special meeting, which we could have, you know, a meeting, which doesn't necessarily have to be on that Tuesday. It could be on another day of the week.
Sure.
Instead of being locked in on it. So, you know, it's really a simple resolution to undo a resolution that we did, so.
I think it makes sense. I mean, if it helps Matt kind of schedule more effectively, that's fine with me.
Sounds good.
So, you want this to move forward to the next regular meeting?
Yes.
Do we need to draft a resol, or draft a title to the resolution, or do you want to move it forward?
We have a resolution. Well, we have a draft not in here, but we have one for you.
Okay.
If you guys want to motion to move it forward to the next council meeting, we'll bring that to you at that time.
Second. Your motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion, or anybody that really wants to have that extra meeting a month?
I hope we do. Because we need it, because of all the economic development.
Well, yeah, see, I wouldn't mind it a bit if we had lots of economic, and we needed that for all these different things going. I think that'd be a good problem. So, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Cannel.
Yes.
Thank you. And our second item is grass and weed code update, and Battalion Chief Jeff Chapman, he's already getting his screen ready, and he's ready to go.
I don't know how ready I am. Good evening, Council Mayor Jeff Chapman, Building Neighborhood Services. Just here to go over again, we put before you some changes. We know we have Municity software coming up and some things that are changing at BNS, and as part of that, I talked to you before about some other changes. This kind of goes along with that. We know that we have problems with grass and weed, and I kind of want to go through just the presentation, what we currently do with grass and weeds and some proposed changes, I think, that you had before you. There might be some tweaks to that, and I'll take some questions afterward. Just going through this, Chapter 94 covers grass and weeds, vines and brush, and you don't have to live in the city of Clinton very long to understand when the grass starts growing, we have problems. I think I went over some numbers a while back with you on how many that encompasses. But in 94.03, it kind of covers the maintenance of the boulevard and who's responsible for that. Talks about our eight-inch height, which is always, should we change it? Should it go to 12? Should it stay at 6? Should it go whatever it is? And everybody argues about what that height and what it should be. There also goes through some exemptions, because some people just don't realize that there are people that are exempt out there. Why don't my neighbor mow his grass, things of that nature, and you can go through that and read that. It's all public record that people can see what the exemptions to that are and what guides us and what we do when it comes to grass and weeds. Going down through that, we have people that fail to comply, and they're the ones that we deal with. 94.07 deals with failure to comply. Basically, if the property owner fails to maintain the property as required under this chapter, after notices given as provided in this chapter, the inspector shall order the work to be done by city employees or by contractor. The total cost, and this is what it currently states, the total cost of the expenses of the work done, including any administrative fees, shall be paid by the property owner. Failure to pay shall result in costs being assessed against property for collection in the same manner as a property tax. So, I want everybody to understand, if people have this happen, they don't follow through with it. They get the notice, they don't mow their grass. We mow the grass for them, we send them a bill, and I'll kind of walk through a little bit of that. They don't pay the bill. We have the ability to put that to lien and certify that.
There you go, Josh.
I don't know.
Much better.
Yeah. Josh.
Josh.
Come here.
Just hang on a second, Joe.
Messing up my stuff.
I know.
It's all right.
What they're seeing on cable is also the same.
Uh.
Yeah, I know.
Which is okay if they can see that, but is there a way not to have the extended version or the duplicate, where you could actually have the slide on the TV?
I guess I'll fill in for the people that are watching at home. What we're trying to do is upgrade our technology here at City Hall so that you can more easily follow what we're doing, and we're still got a few bugs in the system.
So, basically, 94 is what guides what we do. We don't make the rules. The rules are put in place by you. We follow the rules to the best of our ability. How that works, we get a complaint that's received from BNS either by OS ticket, nuisance hotline, walk-in, phone call, sometimes council, call, email, and it happens. Oh, I wasn't pointing to you, Julie. But, you know, you guys field the calls, and we get them, and why we're not there fast enough, or whatever the case may be, we get that to us. We still don't have the staff or the time to be able to go proactively driving down areas to get this stuff, and I think, I hope everybody understands that, that we're still predominantly based on complaint. So, I mean, we have times at the end of the day where what we've done to be a little bit proactive is we go to the middle of the 600 block of whatever block you want to pick. I don't want to pick on anybody, and we go out specifically for one yard. I've instructed the nuisance officers in my office to do the entire block. It's only fair. We can't drive by three to get to one. So, we've changed some of that, and that's about as proactive right now as we can get, because what happens, it's easy to do the inspections. It's all the follow-up that goes along with that, that we have the trouble with. So, we get that call that comes in. Once that comes in, the complaint is assigned for inspection. We split the town into two. We get north and a south. I think the divider's Fourth Avenue North, and they go out and they do their thing. It's assigned to whatever part of town that is. We have the inspections conducted to confirm or deny the nuisance, if it exists per Chapter 90. A confirmed nuisance generates a letter to be sent via certified mail, and I've talked to you before about certified mail, what the costs of that certified mail are, and how many of them that we get returned. So, I just want you to understand the dollars that go along with that. We talked more than one time about this.
Where are we going to get rid of it?
We can't. It's still, I mean, you can, I can't. So, I have to be directed, so.
Didn't we all agree that send it to the water? Oh, that's water?
Yeah.
Well, this is the same situation.
Well, maybe we can talk about that later. So, but we send that out, and remember, with grass and weed specifically, you get one chance per calendar year. So, if we go, you know, to ABC's house, and the first time the grass starts growing, we find that there's a nuisance, we placard that, we send that letter out. After that, if it happens again, we just automatically send it to contractor. It's a one-time chance. So, that saves us some that we don't have to send that every single time, because we have people that, or entities, that will go out 12, 14, 16, 18 times a year to do grass. So, I just want you to understand how that works. Once we get that, we get the confirmed nuisance, and that letter sent out, and it's tagged, they have five days. And remember, we're only talking about grass and weeds. Property cleanup's completely different. They get seven days. It's a little bit different rules, different billing, things of that nature. They get five days. That means we reschedule an inspection. So, inspection number two is scheduled for approximately six days later once that five days runs out. We'll do a reinspection on that. Once that reinspection...
Jeff, could you go back to that one for a second?
Yes, sir.
It says, I'm just, if I were the citizen reading this, a confirmed nuisance generates a letter to be sent via certified mail. When does the five days start? From the day you send the certified mail, or the day they receive it?
From the day that it gets posted, and I'll explain some of that, and this has been the practice that we've done since I've been over here. If we go back and send certified mail, and it's great, they grab it, they're going to get it in a day or two. Awesome, they sign for it, we're good to go. Most of the time, I'm not signing that. It has to be re-attempted three times, and it comes back to us, and that could take up to three weeks. Imagine eight-inch grass that we can't get to for a month is now three-foot. You guys get the phone calls why we're not doing anything. The practice has been, once we go out there, we send the certified mail the first time. We tag that. Five days later, we come back out and we check it again, and we send it to the contractor.
But really, even though they ignore the certified letter, we're still going, it doesn't stop the action of getting the grass.
Correct. Only for grass and weeds and vines and things covered in this section. So, we do the reinspection. We reinspect after the five days to verify. If they're non-compliant, we send them to the contractor. We use iPads. We email. We email pictures to the contractor. It includes an address and a work order. We send that out to the contractor. We have a new contractor who hasn't had the luxury of understanding just how busy grass is. Actually, I take that back. We have a new contractor for cleanup, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit, on how we separate grass out because of the workload. The non-compliant properties, send the contractor for service. Contractor has 48 hours to complete. Remember, we have one contractor, and you get, I told you before, there's times we'll come back on a weekend and have 150 grass complaints. Clear the voicemail, come back in from Friday to Monday, we'll have 150 grass complaints. It's nothing unusual for that department. Imagine being the person that's mowing that grass. It's hard for one to keep up. And this is what, and just remember it for later as we talk about billing and why we want to make some of these changes. Bills are sent to, contractor does 48 hours complete, and it's followed up by a bill. What we found is they get inundated by this, and there's a delay in us getting that invoice back to us. And what that matters is, when we get the invoice, we manually go into Firehouse, remember, which isn't set up for what we're doing, but we're making it do, and it's doing, it does a decent job tracking, but not anything automated. So, we put that in manually in there, and we send a bill out to that person. If that bill's not paid within 30 days, that invoice isn't paid within 30 days, we run a program that kicks us out unpaid. We check it against the lien list, because we have to give them 30 days to do that, and then we go on. So, the bills are sent to BNS to invoice manually, and they're mailed. We manually run a report on the 15th of each month showing outstanding invoices that are greater than 30 days, which is set by the ordinance. It says one month. Now, what happens when they don't pay? Now, if you remember, I'll give you a little bit of quiz here. How many pay?
15 percent.
If we're lucky. Probably 80.
You're supposed to guess, not you.
I was hoping. 85 percent. The thing is, with nuisances, we get very few that pay, which means it generates a gigantic, you've seen them come through. You guys have proven them coming through 15, 16, $17,000 to pay the contractor in grass mowing, and we're certifying these for lien manually, okay? Now, Municity's going to help with a lot of that. That's, you know, applause for getting that, because we expected that to take care of a lot of that billing-type problem, and we're going to be able to at least talk with finance on that. Now, Chapter 90.13, the collection of costs. It says, "The clerk shall send a statement of the total expense incurred by the regular male to the property owner who has failed to abide by the notice to abate. If the amount shown by the statement has not been paid within one month, the clerk shall certify the costs to the county treasurer, and such costs shall then be collected with and in the same manner as general property taxes," if we understand how that works. The issues that we're having with this, and[1575.10] The issues that we're having with this, and the reason I'm standing before you, we don't have that timely billing. So it really comes down to invoicing delays by contractors, because of volume caused delays in billing to BNS, which means we're not getting their bill. We get their bill, we put it in, we send it out. Typically, that's the same day. We get a stack of the babies come in, it could take quite a while to put them in, turn them around, mail them, send them out. Causing the thirty-day lien process to really not be thirty days at all. We're increasing it to at least forty-five. In many cases, it's that. What's that matter? Lien certification, once completed, is sent to you. If we get that all done in a timely fashion, and we send it to you, sometimes it can be delayed ten to fif- ten to fourteen days to get to another meeting to be approved, signed by the mayor, and sent off to the county. Which can delay that and push that out to somewhere around sixty days. Or greater than sixty days. These delays increase the risk of liens not being certified by the county due to property transfers, sales, quitclaim deeds, and et cetera. Which is the reason I'm standing here. I got an example that I want to show you. I blocked out all the pertinent information. Might be hard for you to see, but I'll explain what you have. And I gave an example of last month's misliens due to ownership changes. What we do is, we certify this big list, and we'll send it to the county. They go through it and do the same process of putting in, certifying it. When something pops up with the property, it says, "We certify it to property owner A, but they no longer own it, it's now B." We can't certify that. That cost, now, what happens to it? We all pay it.
We eat it.
It goes into that black hole that continues to increase, that we all pay. So, just last month, the la- excuse me, the last time that we sent in the grass liens, which is a couple of months ago, it's not that big, but it's a thousand and sixty-nine bucks that we're missing out on. Um, that we're unable to certify. Now, what are some, there's, are there other factors that are in there? Absolutely. We're really not talking about your neighbor or my neighbors not mowing their grass that live there. Who are we talking about?
People that are abandoned.
Absolutely. We have a big problem with, with walkaways, abandoned homes, abandoned lots. Even bigger problem is, these get bought up by who? Outside entities that buy these properties on tax sale. And we have people, and I'd be more than glad to provide you a list, that some, we, we have a name, but we can never find who that person is. Once we have that, and they're on to us, I'm telling you, they, they're masters of this. We have some of them that have seven or eight or nine subsidiaries. And they'll change, every forty-five to fifty days, they'll change and quitclaim that over to one of their other, uh, underlings. What are they doing? It's a shell game. You know, we can't catch them. They know that they're not gonna be stuck with these properties. They can't, by law. So, we're trying to come up with reasons and ways that we can better streamline to capture that money, to stop the bleeding, if, if you will. Some of the proposed changes to this. Procedurally. What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. California. California.
Gravel yards? Yeah, I like that. Um, well, it's, we can't, actually, that's, that's, that's against the ordinance. You can't put gravel in the front yard, so you can't do that.
We can change the ordinance.
There you go. So, procedurally, we're not asking for anything different. Everything, how it, how it comes to us, how we, how we react to that, how we respond to that, nothing will change. It comes in the same way. Municity's gonna actually make that easier. It's gonna make it almost real-time. That if I have an inspector in the field, they're on the five-hundred block of South Sixth Street, something comes in from, through the, uh, the, the public, and it comes to that, can go directly to them, if they're in the area, they go right to it. It can, it's, I mean, it's almost real-time, which is exciting. It really is. It's, 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 there's gonna be very little lag with that if it works correctly. And I don't have any reason to believe it won't. Administratively, we're asking for the following changes to chapter ninety, to at least consider some of these changes. What's that? Sorry. Ninety-four oh-seven, failure to comply. If the property owner fails to maintain the properties required under this chapter, after notice is given as provided in the chapter, the inspector shall order the work to be done by city employees or by a contractor. The city of Clinton shall charge the property owner two hundred dollars to offset administration fees and contractor costs. There's the change.
Yep.
Now, you may ask, how much of an increase is that? I've had people back here that helped me out that are very, very good, saying, "Hey, you could charge them ten thousand bucks. If we're not gonna collect the money, what's it really matter?" And they're right. Absolutely, a hundred percent right. Doesn't matter what the cost is, if we can't collect that cost. So, keep your ears open for what we're talking about here. Failure to pay shall result the cost being assessed against the property for the collection in the same manner as property taxes. We want that change to be there, we'll talk about why. Then we want, we'd like to see a change in ninety point one-three, the collection of them costs. The clerk shall send a statement to the total expense incurred by the regular mail to the property owner. Everything stays the same as I read to you before. The change is any liens that are deemed not certifiable. The ones that we get kicked back to us, property orders, it's changed. Property's no longer the same. Doesn't mean somebody does not owe that money. We'd like to see that any liens that are deemed not certifiable will be turned over to collection for further attempts to collect the debt. And sort of the same process that finance uses now for the sewer bills. What are we hoping to accomplish by doing this? This is really what the nuts and bolts are, right? Increase the fees, we're hoping that, for the general public, two hundred bucks, like, wow, I don't want them to mow my grass. That's expensive for two hundred dollars to mow my grass. We're hoping that that acts as a deterrent to, to most folks. Though, in a tent of the absent property owners that are here locally, to say, "Man, I'm gonna have somebody sit cheaper to pay Billy down the street twenty bucks to mow it regularly than have the city come to do that." If we have it like that, it still gives, um, my inspectors the ability that if we get the widow, like we had on Tenth Street a few years ago with the snow, to say, "I went on vacation, and little Billy forgot. Can you show me some grace?" And we're able to do that and say, "Here's a bill directly from the contractor, we'll let you pay this." Because we know things happen like that. Them aren't the people that we get typically. Them are, them are really atypical to get somebody that has that, that you get them maybe once a year. We really don't get them. We have the habitual ones that we're dealing with. This was gonna allow us to lien closer to thirty days, as close as possible with timely or billing for service. Because what will happen is, um, with, with the matchup to municity software, we'll be able to generally, generate invoices at the request for service. Like I told you, it's gonna be almost real-time. If we go out there, the end of them five days, it's not mowed, and we push that button to send it to the contractor, we can establish that two hundred dollar fee, because it's not really a bill, it's a fee. You didn't, you are in violation of the ordinance, we're gonna charge you for that. It lets us have no lag from that contractor getting that bill back to us in fifteen to seventeen days, fourteen days. It cuts down on that thirty days, so that clock starts ticking from that moment they hit that button. That's gonna allow us to be closer to the thirty days, to not allow them shell games to happen and change them properties like they're doing at forty-five to fifty days. It, it just cuts down the contractor billing delays, reduces our time to invoice. It's gonna allow us to utilize min- uh, multiple contractors, if, if, if you take this into consideration, then instead of RFPing and using one contractor that we know don't keep up, and that's part of the problem that we're not getting billing on time, is because they're inundated by hundreds upon hundreds of these things. That if we can use multiple contractors that obviously will meet criteria set by the city to be a contractor, that we'd be able to use multiple contractors to do this in a more timely fashion, to have bills come in. Once they do it, they take their photos, because we require a photo before, photo after. Here's what, here's the mo- the grass I mowed, here's your email back, almost real-time again, that we can keep this process moving. By allowing us to use multiple contractors, it's gonna prevent overwhelming one contract, contractor, allow for quicker response in the workload as, as well as speedier billing. The increase in billing allows for faster invoicing, thus reducing the probability of losing a lien certification due to property transfers. And this is where I'll open up the questions from you.
When you have multiple contractors, are you, are you gonna, like, certify them for a year or something like that, and then give each one a call as the calls arrive? Or is it gonna favor any particular contractor?
Our, our goal is to have, it, let's just say we have, let's throw a number of five out there. We have five contractors. We'd like to rotate that, almost like the police do with the tow list.
Okay.
If you're on there, we'd like to rotate it through, and believe me, there's no lack of work.
And then, um, are a lot of these rentals? Businesses?
Ironically enough, we, we do get some rentals. Um, most of what we're dealing with are abandoned residential properties.
Okay.
To be flat honest with you.
Yeah, okay.
We have very few. If I go through, I'm sure I could find you a commercial, but that's, 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 man, that's not one that's open. You might go along the Miracle Mile and see there's some grass that was along last year, and we get some of them. But the ones that we, that I remember along, uh, Lincoln Way in Liberty Square, some of them were people that didn't realize that that was their responsibility, and we've rectified a lot of that on them.
Yeah, okay.
You go by and see one little swath that's not mowed, we have an issue. We typically try to find that person. We had one at the foot of Fourteenth Street in, in Liberty.
Yeah.
Comanche Avenue, that nobody knew who was responsible underneath the, the advertising signs, and we, we got that rectified last year.
And then, how many are residential homes that somebody's living in? Very few?
We do get them. But they're not the ones we get over and over. We may get them one time, and that's it. They're not, they're typically not the habituals.
Right. Okay.
What we get for habitual are people, um, that may have passed, no next of kin.
Right.
Uh, we have several of them, and you, and you see the names, I, I can provide, and I'm sure you see them over and over. They're just, there's nobody to claim it. It's, it's a washing machine. If we, we have to get out of it some way, and like I said, I'll turn it over to you, because I'm all ears. If you have any way you'd like to tweak that, any ideas, believe me, we're all ears on, on, on what to do, because it was rough. Even though the city looked better, they worked their tails off. But it was rough to do that.
A lot of these vacant lots and, uh, walkaways, you know, most of those, a bank has a mortgage, you know, that those people have walked away from, and they don't foreclose on the mortgage, so that they have to take care of the property. So I think you need to look at some legal way of.
You're, you're right on the money. We, we found some resources to cover some of that, um, with them resources to cover that.
One of the best words he ever said.
Right, so we get the resources to get that, we have, now have resources, um, that we can find these. We actually have a local resource that's been very good at saying, "Hey, we got a foreclosure. I'm typically in charge of a lot of them in Clinton. Let's share resources." And yes, absolutely. So, and you're right, they don't wanna take responsibility.
But that's, that's the biggest amount that you're dealing with.
Let's rack it up on the person who's been foreclosed on, even though they've been out of the house for ten, eleven, twelve months. You're absolutely right.
But the banks need to foreclose on a property.
I agree. I agree.
They don't do it, so they don't have to pay these bills.
We do have some banks that are, um, and credit unions that are pretty proactive, and they'll contact us right away. And they take responsibility, but that's few and far between.
Right, okay.
For sure.
A lot of times, they're not really local banks, they've been, the mortgage has been sold out three, four, five, six times.
Local ones have been very, very cooperative. Right. Yep, for sure. Any other questions?
What's the ISB you've seen?
Good, it's a good question, I knew they'd come up. So will the two-hundred cover that? Typically, what we, what we see on the average is a hundred and nineteen dollars for a mowing. That's with an administrative fee. Now, remember, now, let's, let me back you up for a second. Remember what we charged last year per hour in mow? Eighteen dollars and twenty, eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay.
Minimum two hours, typical on that. There are some other little things in there, if they had to use special equipment, had to clean up first, some of these varied. But typically, that two hundred dollars is gonna cover an administrative fee and the contractor. Because we're, we're looking at, and I proposed that to you before, and it should be in the packet somewhere, you had a flat rate for these folks that are mowing also.
Yep.
Lots with nothing on them versus a house and things, they have to go around trim, things of that nature. We're still, that's not stone.
I was wondering if you're gonna say, you know, because we got a lot of, what, five thousand square foot lots in town? But then, we got some that are ten, and then, so I didn't know if you were gonna.
We wanna keep it as simple as we possibly can.
I, yeah, yeah.
I think you see that, that what's, it's in there on what I presented to you guys in the packet, so.
What is?
I, before, that, we've talked, this wasn't the first time we've talked. There should be, and I can email it again to you, on what our thought is for, for mowing on them, and what we're thought of for that flat fee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There's nothing in here.
We've had it, though, before.
It's been, it's before, it wasn't the one you got.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
It's back a few meetings.
I know that you've come before us several times now and asked us for help.
I'm asking again.
I know.
Please help.
Too bad, man. And you're doing it early enough in the season, so we're not halfway through the.
Well, that's the other, that's the other thing, I'll leave you with this. If, and I appreciate your consideration, let's just, first and foremost, my department appreciates your consideration and your support. We've got nothing but support from the council, and we, we couldn't do it without you. You guys are the ones that set the rules, give us the guidelines, and are the ones that really set this in motion. So, if we do nothing, and say, "You know what, we're not gonna touch it, we're gonna, let's just wait," we're gonna keep doing business as usual, which I think's really the wrong thing to do, to keep stacking up that bill. However, if you choose to do nothing, I have to put an RFP out, and that has to go out really soon. Because before you know it, it's much like to think of what's here tomorrow, or what's the grass that's starting growing. Um, it's gonna be here before we know it. We have to have the RFP out if not, and if, even if you do approve it, we have to get that list together and, and put that advertisement out to say, "We're taking folks to do lawn maintenance for the city club."
What was the highest bill, though? You never answered that.
I avoided it.
For mowing?
No. The highest bill that we've seen on the average, uh, the highest with the forty-five dollars, it was a hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Okay. Because we own, you know, we are, the city limits is all the way out to the airport, so I mean, you could end up with a.
That's, that's another, and we have in the past done some three-acre lots, and that, that would be a caveat on there, that we would deal with that separately. That's very, very rare to have that.
I suspected that didn't happen very often, yeah. Can you go back two slides? I think it was slide nine, I got a question. I think it was nine, maybe it was eight.
No, we would just like that, just click on nine.
Yeah, that's easier to read.
The last line of the slide, "In liens that are deemed non-certifiable, will be turned over to collection for further attempts to collect that debt." Now, that, this was to try to catch the game-playing LLCs that, that are out there.
Yes, sir.
Once that's turned over to collections, who's to say that that collection agency or those folks are actually gonna be going after the right person? Then we're not gonna have people going, "I just bought the house," or whatever it was. Doesn't matter, you own the house, you're on the deed now.
We're not, we're not going by address. This isn't going by address. We're well beyond address. By the time it comes back lien, I get a report that goes with that, that the property's transferred. We're going after the person that transferred the property out.
I'm just looking for protection for somebody, whoever it is. Because there's been a few cases where people have, had that happen, and they've got maybe an outstanding lien that they maybe didn't know was there, it was, it happened fast. Just protection for those folks, because once we relea- you know, relieve that to an agency.
Can't say that wouldn't happen, but I, we'd, we'd make every effort to have that not.
And what a, what a, what's a typical charge from a collection agency and? I know, I just can't remember what it was.
Twenty-eight percent, I think, yeah, twenty-eight.
Sounds about right.
Well, it's twenty-eight we wouldn't have had before, or the balance. It'd have to be two, yeah.
How successful has that been, Anita?
We've collected some. I mean, it hasn't been a great success, but keep in mind, when we implemented sending to a collection agency, we had accounts that were really, really old, yeah, so.
Of course, you're also dealing with people that have probably left the area there, that were renters, that, as opposed to somebody that possibly still is in the area, they're able to be found.
Yeah.
Some people, the renters that leave sometimes disappear off the face of the earth, never to be seen again.
Any other questions?
How would you like this to proceed forward, and we had to create some kind of resolution? You just want to?
This would be ordinance charges.
Our ordinance, uh, you're gonna draft some, those modifications, or are you just saying these are the modifications? We need to adopt them as requested, basically?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to, um, adopt the changes as presented.
Second.
Or forward them to the adoption process.
Yeah, it'll, it'll take a while for legal to make sure everything's right, and then it'll come back to the council, come back as a first reading. Is there any, we had a motion in a second, is there any other discussion for this? Any other questions?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeff. We have to have roll call both now, please.
Councilmember Shimmers?
Yes.
Oder?
Yes.
Gassman?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Higra?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Town.
Yes.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna move on to the review of the capital improvement plan. And Matt Tholzer getting himself prepared.
Feel like Oliver North.
His outcome wasn't the best.
We got some good things going.
Hey, Ollie.
Is that the one you wanted to show?
Yes, sir, I'll keep that.
I know it differs from the one we have here.
Oh, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you a couple of different things, I'm gonna get there. So, first though, I'd just like to start out and say that this is, uh, covering the capital improvement planning and the CIP. And, uh, for some of our folks, uh, who've just joined us, um, councilmember Shimmers, but also, I'd like to say for the folks that were, um, on the committee, each one of the councilmembers is actually able to attend at least one of the sessions. So we've been able to have some of these conversations. We also had, I'd like to thank Dave Brown for the Planning Commission Chair, Missy Sullivan-Pope from Clinton Community School District, Tom Dederman from the Clinton County Board of Supervisors, and Michael Kurchhoff, at-large committee member. And of course, all those great people behind me that are on the staff that helped as well across the board for this, okay? Also, just as you know, as far as the procedure for capital improvement plans, um, how it works is, there are several workshops that are put together. We get the ideas of what things need to be happening in the, in the city for progress. Um, and then that basically goes to the commission board for recommendation, then that brings me to here today. And so what we'll talk about today is, uh, the nuts and bolts of those priority items. Um, and then we'll look to see if, if that looks good, set a public hearing to bring those, and then have those on the council meeting February thirteenth. However, comma, while that's all progressing, we'll be working on the levy to take a look at that. So there's no decisions need to be made today as far as that, except for moving this to set a public hearing, um, for the January thirtieth meeting, and then having this come up on February thirteenth. Because there's still a lot of decisions you all have to make on how we set the levy and what those, uh, dollar amounts will be. So this is more information to show you what has been racked and stacked, and what has been prioritized, for you to take a look at on those. And, um, and really what this is too, is we, we set out, and maybe I'll jump to that one too. We set out to, um, basically look at FY nineteen, which starts July first of two thousand and eighteen, and then we look five plus one year out. And we look at the five years for what we could actually, it's sort of like a dream list, if you will. Um, and then that six-year out is all the things that don't make the cut for the first five years. Understanding this all comes from debt service levy. So this would all be from where this would act, have to originate from. Um, that is why I said there were some caveats, because as we work through the budget process and sort through that is, we'll get to be able to see our left and right limits for that. So the page that I currently have up is, um, the one that gives an overall update, I think, can you guys see that on the screen okay?
Sure.
For the sec- I, I'm gonna, I'm doing this a similar way that those were at the final CIP I did, I just kinda walked through it if you have questions. But let me orient you to the slide first, so, basically, uh, we're not at the top. Let me get over there. Anita was right, we need a mouse for this here. Or better control my, okay. So, as you look across the top at the fiscal years, two thousand and nineteen, I left a little gap on purpose, and then two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And what that basically is, is as you go, and as you know, and not to insult your intelligence, but as you put more debt on the books, then you get less availability to have debt in future years. So you have to be able to track, not only the next year you're gonna do, but the new years out. And you also want to look at, um, there are some smaller capital projects that will actually be in a separate category that all get put together when we finalize this. So then you also have to look at, um, what that projected debt would be, and so just for now, and everybody's sitting down and take a big sigh, but for now, just for planning, we looked at about nine million dollars for two thousand and nineteen, six point two for two thousand and twenty, and seven point eight for twenty-one. And a quiz question, does anybody remember the first CIP, what I thought we could shoot for?
Seven point five?
Yes, ma'am. And then twelve point five, and then seven point five. So we've rearranged a little bit, and I'll show you why in there as we went through the priority. Um, first and foremost, so as we go, then you basically run that to your general obligation, the go part of the bond, right here. And that, that basically adds you in with what capability you came into the year, how much you borrowed, and then what you have left. And so you can actually see it's good that the numbers stay positive as you keep going, right? Um, so then what we did was, we started the first CIP really with the philosophy. Who is Clinton, where is Clinton going, and what are the things we need to focus on? One of the, the, the resounding pieces across the board, I think I had twenty-one people pick it as like either number one or number up to number five, was pavement management plan. So, with this, and we talked a little bit yesterday, um, on the sewer fund, but with this, a lot of this pavement management plan that Jason has laid out, actually would complement the sewers and the storm separation, um, and they would be done in harmony as they go. And so for that, I would like just to take a moment of the three million, and just to point out, this is a maintenance item. Um, and I have M and or A in maintenance or advancement, and some are both, because some are doing maintenance, but it's also an advancement. Um, but if you look at this, just to kinda put it in context, if you were to borrow three million dollars for pavement management, that would be nineteen cents per thousand that you're borrowing. The thousand meaning the thousand, how much your house costs, per thousand that your house is assessed at, you understand that? So, what I did was, I basically took fifty-eight cents, which is the total, if we had to borrow, the nine million dollars is fifty-eight cents. And you take the three million, right here, and then what you do, and the algorithm is, you basically take that, and you times that by point five eight and divide it by the, uh, overall, um, amount you're borrowing, the nine million. And so that's how you come up with nineteen cents for it. So, these are racked and stacked, so as we go down through the coming weeks, as we have to make some cuts here and there, we'll basically start at the bottom of here and work our way up, but as you can see, um, Whittier School and ADA ramps doesn't cost us anything because we use the road use tax fund for that part. And then as you move up, you can see it's like point zero two cents, point zero zero eight, point zero zero eight, so very small amounts, okay? And with that too, is we also look, and we do this, is there anywhere we can also pull monies from, okay? And so, on this, we have a couple of different categories, and I'm gonna bounce back in just a second to show where we do that. First, I'm gonna run through and just tell you the prioritized list and what it's about. So pavement management, I wanna jump to, if I can see it in my thing, that Jason provided.
Hey, quick question.
Yes, sir?
I see the three million, wasn't that, originally was it two point eight, and then did we, or is there two hundred?
It was, it was two point. It was originally two point eight, Jason and I went back through, and he said we need to do three point one for this main reason here, so. On this sheet here, this will show you, um, the residential resurfacing along with the thirteenth avenue. So there's really two categories that Jason juxtaposed in this. The first one is the collector street resurfacing, and this one he's been talking about, as you go out to the landfill and take thirteenth avenue, there's gonna be some work done, and then it's gonna be, um, black topped over the top all the way to Elvira. So that's the part of, that we're contributing along with the county to, to get done. And then, the rest of it then is broken out, based on how he, he used traffic patterns and all that, his, 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 I call him the chief innovator. Um, how he came up basically with all the other residential resurfacings that will take place across the board. And that are, that's how basically you come up with the three point one. If you do the, or three million, if you do the calculation, I think it's like two point nine five seven. But with contracts, as you know, that we have to leave just a little bit of over room for those, so. That's where that number adjusts a, a bit on that one there, because we included that. And so those are the streets, but that's in your packet as well, that should be underneath your first slide in your packet. And then we'll go back, and now I'm gonna go, just so I don't lose you. I think this is an easier slide to understand. So, I mentioned, uh, there's other ways to pay for this, and so when we drop down to the next piece, this is the Turtle Creek project. Um, this is what Anita brought up yesterday when we were talking about the projects in conjunction with the sewer. So there's actually nine hundred thousand that would come from the sewer fund to pay part of that. And then the road use tax fund, um, piece would be two hundred thousand, and so the bond for that one would be one point three million.
Why don't you borrow the whole thing? Cause you're increasing the sewer rates with that nine hundred thousand dollar expense.
Well, we were thinking at the time, we could, but we were thinking at the time, that was actually on hand sewer rate fees that we had, so we would not have to borrow for the longer period, so.
I mean, you could reduce that.
But that, that right there is the amount that we're looking at as the deficit.
Eight hundred thousand, right?
Yep.
So we bonded for that.
And then we just need to go, and, and that's fine, and we just need to find other things that we would then reduce off the list, so, yeah.
Well, I guess, Matt, maybe just because, um.
For time.
Well, well, we've, we've got some councilmembers that haven't been here as many times. This is one of those things that we, this is where you draw a circle around that one.
Sure.
And when we start to look at the budget, and we start to see what we build our fifteen seventy-nine, sixteen oh-two, we add in the debt service, and okay, if we add another three cents for this, or take away three cents, if we do that, we see how that might make an effect there. So you know, it's kinda one of those ones that you, that famous, we'll put a pin in that one.
Certainly.
That, that's a discussion item to come up in the future.
I gave it a special yellow with red pin color.
Okay, but, but you know, but that's what I think is important for the council to look at.
No, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Is, you know, cause when I saw that call, I agree with you, it's like that was exactly the amount that we're looking at, that that might be a way to avoid a sewer rate increase.
And that's what Jason was talking about yesterday, because what he did, um, for the, the west parking lot and for River Pool, we just pulled those out, but that was FY twenty. So I'm with you. Uh, the next is.
That would only cure the issue for one year, though, right?
True.
That wouldn't solve the ongoing.
Right. It'd get us closer.
But it gives us another year to figure out a solution.
Yeah.
So, the other part here is that, this is an add-in that you guys, um, we've talked about, and so, with this is, we understand too, just to let you know that the, uh, tiger grant piece has actually moved to DC. Uh, and it's in the final throes, so we're supposed to be finding out here shortly.
Wait, what is?
Tiger grant.
Tiger, I'm sorry, I changed gears, I, but the tiger grant for Mill Creek Parkway. No, no, but I'm coming back. So the tiger grant is at, for Mill Creek Parkway is at the final throes with, uh, the, the federal DOT. The reason that's important is because if it does not get approved, you all gave me guidance that we focus on Riverview Drive. Okay, so for Riverview Drive, I got with Snyder's Group. It's, this is the high estimate of what would take to put everything together, to, first off, they have to get the four oh eight done for the dyke, which they're working on. But then this would be all the things that they would need to get done to then be able to submit for an infrastructure grant. So I put, I moved this up, the four hundred K, that also could be something that we could slide, but I don't know if infrastructure grants will be around next year.
But they talking about pork, again, about giving pork.
We're ready for some pork, trust me.
We're ready, we spent a long time.
They got rid of those, they got rid of those a while ago.
That was, that was news today.
If you do that, then that's when you go out with a contingent, and you go out and beg for our one project, our one thing. Here it is, and we take a, a big pre.
And why that's important is, is because, let's just say we get, let's be hopeful and say we get Mill Creek. And this one here, by doing, having this funds available, although we may not spend it all, we would have that package ready to go out to DC and be like, we're ready, we're shovel ready, we're ready to go. Here we go. The other one I put in quiet zone, and this was one I can cut, so I, I, I don't want to delay tonight. No, no, I'm sorry, I, wait, wait, I'm sorry, let me re, re. So, this is one I could reduce the cost on, because I actually had a great conversation with, with Jim Krieger from CP. He basically said it all starts out just like a road, we need to do a study. Muscatine's doing a similar study, it's like thirty thousand dollars. So, this has money included, because when you start the process and you do the study, it'll analyze with businesses, we'll get with the businesses, um, custom pack, uh, ACI, all the, all the businesses up and down, the, the citizens, they'll all come in and talk, and they'll, we'll use this, this group. And when you decide, we're not doing it yet, but when you decide, say there's a, I don't know, five crossings that could be taken out. At that point, CP jumps in because they're excited, they help us get state money, and they help us up, close those sites and give us money for the sites to get ready for federal quiet zones. And that's when you start to get the two hundred fifty K per site, but it won't cost us that, because guess what? We already have almost all the stuff done, and we just got new crossings put in and done, as far as the roadway goes. So I don't want to get anybody excited, this is a twelve to eighteen months, but I wanted to have some funds set up to start, to at least do that study with an engineer group that will do the hard work, they have five tasks that they have to do, that would basically get us ready and make everybody up and down the railroad track a lot happier as they go. So I added that in there. Um, the library, as Holly can tell you, um, they probably need about two point five million dollars. What we did was, I actually cut her another fifteen, sorry Holly, I know you're back there, is, we did three hundred thirty-five thousand, and this is, this has to be done. This is like, the, uh, from the stairs to the elevator to the side, this is safety, just pure safety, and, um, we're not even cracking the nut on the other things that need to be done, so we have that in there. Um, and speaking of safety, the city hall elevator, um, which we think we can maybe come down maybe five thousand on that as well. The west stadium parking lot, we could probably actually, based on if we move forward with the first avenue pumping station and the first avenue main, probably get rid of that one there too, and slide it, put it all together, just not do anything at that, we were just gonna do a portion. But if we're gonna do the green pavers project, that's the eight hundred thousand that would be added on, that's where we, we'd actually, could actually make some money there. Uh, the city hall parking lot, um, I mean, that's been put off for many, many years, but that's like, making it a little more green, adding some trees and changing around. We have some general diagrams we've done, um, but that's for that. Playground equipment, it's just, you know, you talk about, um, what we have to offer as a city, I think there's a rule that you should be within several, a handful of blocks to be able to get your child to a park. Um, we have lots of parks, but it's not necessarily, so this would be a, a way that Josh could actually start executing, um, the park master plan. To, to include the next one down, which would be the riverfront, which is security, these are the, uh, high def cameras in the locks that we would use. Um, uh, security locks on the bathrooms that would be timed since, set, and also that would be for, um, campers that are there would get the code, so they could still use the facility. Uh, the north parking lot stadium as well, um, I don't know if you've been in there lately, but it, it needs a lot of love as well. The Jorgensen Soccer Complex, this is actually something we pushed from the, the early year to push back, and we want to do it, um, still in FY nineteen next summer. Um, even though, remember, the, uh, stadium is, the complex is due to open in the spring of nineteen. But this would be a concession stand restroom, and it gives us a little more elbow room for some more irrigation. Um, because as you know, if we don't have the grass, we're back to square one on that, so we want to have some good grass. LED lights in here, I know it's a small charge piece, but it could be a game changer. Um, when we had the audit done by Alliant, there's tons of money that we could get rebated and also start to save across all our buildings, but we thought we'd start here at the central hub and set the example for that. Um, the taxiway, we have to do this because Mike will get four hundred ninety-four thousand more dollars. So this is probably the best piece in there, it says five thirty-eight, but really what we're bonding for is forty-four thousand. Which is a no-brainer, that's, that's probably the best grant we have going up there, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, we are.
Eagle Point Lighting, this is basically, we talked about this, Josh did, um, as you pull in, you know, during the Christmas season lights, it's great, but this would be when they don't have the Christmas tree lights, and you have the little posts that go, go on there, um, for lights. The monument maintenance, this is across the board, all our monuments, starting with, uh, the Cornell statue for World War One. Um, open the lock on, uh, the trail, the Joyce's Slough, um, for there. That's, right now we have, looking at three hundred K, but we're also going to discuss this gently with the Corps of Engineers as we work the Riverview Drive piece as well, because it needs to be done.
This is the one that we need to dynamite back open again.
Yeah.
Probably at this point.
Um, the Mill Creek Pawnee generation, uh, was like, our generator liked to throw a, a shout out and a thank you to the emergency management folks, they, they actually granted. Uh, Julie went to the final meeting and threw down her muscle, uh, sixty thousand dollars for this, that helps out. But this is the last generator we need in the sequence of the, of the locks to have us back up for power.
Sure, she gets all the credit, I'm the one that got beat up in the preliminary.
Yes.
And that's the way it should be.
And then this is, uh, the Carborne, Carborne ditch restoration, and, and we're gonna see also, we'd like to, as we take a look at this, I mentioned earlier, um, or previous, uh, settings, also take a look to where we could actually create a silding area at the northern end of Joyce's Slough, so we don't have as much silt come in, along with the opening of Joyce's Slough would help that as well. Um, the Erickson Center Northwest Parking Lot, actually these two to go together, this is on the north side of, uh, the Erickson Center. Um, redoing the parking lot there, and then also resurfacing the pickleball court. And then, um, Mr. Delacy and I need to chat, because this is actually school-owned, so we're gonna see if we can work a deal where we take back that property, we do these things. This is where the pickleball pros requested that this get done, um, they had choices of, you know, different places around town. They requested this get done at Emma Young, to have a state-of-the-art pickleball court, court there. Outdoor fitness, you know, we talked about health and welfare a lot, um, but this would be, uh, this is a part for Josh that he's really thinks can go over really good, up on the Riverview Drive there, the Emma Young softball lights, um, this is, yes, these are LED, but these are the, puts us in, no pun intended, but in a league of ourselves as far as, uh, with the big dogs being able to have the softball leagues in town with the LED lights and, uh, saving some dollars on power too. And that brings us back to ADA ramp and Whittier School crossings. And then, what I'm not gonna do is, because this is gonna come later, I'm just gonna show you what it'll look like by using the police's example. There're gonna be some smaller pieces, because there's three police cars that'll be requested, and we'll actually bring that through during the budget process to show you guys. And then those will all be added, um, back in together there, okay? And then, what do I have for?
You know the sheet you got in the packets, isn't the sheet that's up there?
Um, yeah, there's, well, no, I'm showing.
Two added.
It's a little different, yeah.
You, you have another hundred thousand, we got ten, two, three, three, and you have ten, three, 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 and that's the fifty for the stadium, or the lighting and fifty for the monument.
Or did I pull, I might have pulled my, I have like fifteen Excel's open, I might have pulled the wrong one.
Oh, it's okay.
It's okay, we just.
Right, it might be here.
Is the one that we have the correct one?
No.
Oh, which one was the difference, Paul, I'm sorry.
You're at nineteen fourteen, where it says, uh, taxiway, there was, uh, two more added in, the, uh, Eagle Point Lights for fifty thousand, and then the monument for fifty thousand on that one, and it ended up, uh, adding.
Oh, yes, the, the reason being is, those were down below in the small pieces, and they didn't have a home, so when I was, I was copying what, you know, plagiarism, both that's more flattery. Wouldn't Anita had done this, but I basically took, and I moved those from the bottom, because they don't really fall into a category per se, like the monuments is more like the city administrator's, you know, little piece that he wants to do, so that I slid that up there, so. But I'll make sure the numbers.
But that's why it's different.
Yeah.
Well, they're actually there, they're just in another category.
Yeah, I, I moved them up from the bottom, because I started to parse out, because Anita said I'm getting into the, her budget stuff, so I gotta, I gotta wait on that.
I'm gonna just break out the monuments, since it's something the city administrator wants.
We don't need that. And then, um, if we have ample time, I don't know if we do. You guys have this in your packet, but I didn't know if you had any questions, or the public would. Uh, and these are the projects from FY eighteen, and if anybody needs this that's listening out there in the public or behind me or here, this is basically just an update of all the projects that we had, because one of the things that Jessica did a really good job on, she would close out, like, hey, these are the, the old stuff we did, this is the new stuff, so I wanted to make sure you guys had that in your packet as well, um, to cover.
I gotta comment on.
Yes, sir.
Um, we, what, how much did we put aside for the showboat, three hundred?
Three hundred thousand dollars, yep.
I just wanted to clarify that we, that, that money, the majority of it was used to help preserve the bill, the, the actual boat itself, because it's rusting so bad and stuff, so, um, the discussion that we had back when we decided to do that was getting it sandblasted and getting it repaired and.
Oh, you need your mic, sir.
Yeah, turn your mic up, now you can start all over.
Yeah, yeah, so sand, sand blasting, painting, and, you know, repairing it. And I, we probably should be getting bids for that right now, so they can start in the spring.
So Josh is probably eagerly trying to stand up behind me, but he has been, um, this, this has been a little challenging just be- because there's several different components that no one, not one group does, all the components.
Yeah.
So we're putting out separate pieces to get the quotes, specifically if it's a certain dollar amount or over a dollar amount. But you're spot on, it's the electric we're concerned about, it's the sandblasting and the outside, that, um, there's some inside drips and drops stuff that we're worried about too, based on that, the really good engineer study that was done. Um, and we're, he's basically trying to stretch three hundred thousand into five hundred thousand, not doing it literally, but trying to stretch it, because that's how much stuff. It's probably not, it's sort of like ba- barely chipping at what needs to be done for the showboat.
I think the most important part is in preserving the integrity of it, which would involve the sandblasting and painting. That was our, I mean, if you walk, if you get anywhere near it, I mean, it's terrible.
We actually, two of us walked it with Greg prior to even the three hundred thousand ask, and, and looked at it before the engineers got involved, and, and he had stated that they had it power washed once, and power washing is just not gonna cut anymore, it's gotta be blasted, and there's parts that would have to be probably, uh, replaced and, um, considerable amount of pitting on, on the iron that's there, but.
Mayor Council, Josh Eggers, Parks and Recreation, uh, this has been an awfully challenging project, I've, I've spent the bulk of my past probably month on this showboat. Uh, we do have a contractor that, that is willing to suggest that pressure washing with his capabilities will be able to almost do what we needed to do prior to painting, they don't think the sandblasting is necessary at this time. If we do sandblast that boat and paint it, you may blow your three hundred thousand dollars there, and might I suggest, I've been on that boat more. I've been on that boat more times than I can count in the last month, there's a lot of structural integrity issues that need to be addressed. We can paint it all we want, but that does not address the faulty steps, the faulty decking, the other faulty issues. The water issues in the bow of the boat that we don't know where it's coming from, we're trying to, you know, get plumbers to look at that tomorrow, so. My fear is, we put the money in to paint it, but it still has structural issues, so I mean, I'm trying to tackle that as best I can. Uh, it's really been eye-opening for me to, to take part of this project to figure out like, like wow, where do I, where do I go, where do I start, so. Um, painting is part of the project, but I don't know if sandblasting is gonna be feasible for that price range. I talked to one contractor who specializes in that kind of stuff, he said. That's a pretty massive task to sandblast that entire boat. And I would be glad to tour with anybody, because I would love other eyes to see what I see when I'm on that, when I'm on that vessel. It's a beautiful vessel, it's a very important part of our community, we wanna preserve it, but there's a lot of integra- structural. Integrity items that really, really need to be addressed if we're gonna move forward with it.
Is there any cat, I think there's cat and recap money left.
Potentially, we could, we could see what those funds would.
We might as well try for it.
Yeah. It would be, it would be worth it, because if we're gonna do it and do it right, it may take more than three hundred thousand. I like he's, like Matt said, I'm gonna try to stretch that as far as I can, but.
We'll be out there scraping ourselves.
The, the, the problem with it, it's rusted so bad, you power wash it, the rust eats right back through the paint.
But once you've identified a safety issue, now you've opened up.
Well, we had a, here's what I'm confused about, we paid someone to do a study on that and they said, oh yeah, it's in great shape, why are there all of a sudden structural issues?
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't use the word structural too, too loosely. I mean, what I mean is like the decking, the deck, the, the, the deck around the, the board, I mean, we had a.
But that stuff, your department can just go.
Some of, yeah, we had a general contractor come through and just kinda give us a rough bid, just a rough number for some of the project. We're in about the four hundred fifty thousand dollar range and that really wasn't tapping into everything in that.
Is that without paint?
That's, was with paint, but didn't include the electrical, electrical, you, I've got one bid back, I'm meeting another contractor tomorrow to try to get that. Because when you walk through the vessel itself, I mean, there's a lot of electrical concerns that. Weren't addressed as part of the, the original McClure inspections, so. Again, this would be one I would be more than happy to take anybody through and just, so they can see what I see and I would be more than happy to take advice. As much as I, I love to, to try to act like I know what I'm doing in that particular realm, that is a brand new thing for me to try to figure out what's best for this. For this vessel, I mean, it's, it's.
Rotary.
You know, it's, it's, uh, trying to take a project of a boat that we've turned into a, um.
Show.
A show, yeah.
And how do we fix it and make it?
Well, alright, I'm happy I brought it up, maybe we can discuss it more.
Cause one of the things Josh and I said is like, as the spring starts to crickle. One of the goals I gave him, I think it's, uh, Ju- mid-June fourth, was to try to get as much done as possible, cause the shows are gonna start.
I, yeah, I was disappointed that it wasn't done on the outside last year.
Yep, believe me, there's been a lot of sleepless nights worrying about how am I gonna get this boat where people want it to be with the money we've got allocated towards it.
Well, it's safety.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
But it's a showpiece on the riverfront, I mean, it.
We're actually looking at two, and that's why the cost's a little more, because if you think about what Creighton had done in, uh, Liberty Square with the paddle wheel. We want to do the same thing, but that, that, like paddle wheel is the bright, bright red that pops, or. Even we were just kidding around one day, but you know, paint the windows, it looks like people, you know, Mark Twain days are on the boat, you know, as you drive by.
Yeah.
Versus a piece of plywood that's peeling that has white paint on, you know.
It looks terrible.
To kinda give you a summary of what we think the project's gonna look like, based on what I think might be feasible. Would be a pressure wash and painting of the vessel, which we've talked to professionals, that, that's what they recommend. Replacing or repairing some of the issues where we've got the tubular piping, um, that goes in the first, second and third decks to metal. Um, and also the deck that would surround it, um, again with the plumbing in the basement, the electrical, and then sprinklering I think is gonna be required just because. Of the safety concerns with that boat. There are two access points out the back, if we did not sprinkle that boat, I think we'd be, uh, be doing a very big disservice to that. To the people that, the patrons that are on it. I mean, you're talking a two hundred, uh, passenger boat. Lot of times, senior populations are there watching, you know, uh, matinees and how are they gonna get out? I mean, they gotta go to the back of the boat if there were a fire. And that's why we had to adjust the electrical, which wasn't even mentioned in the McClure report, that was through another inspection we went through, so. This has really been a domino effect of what's next, and I, that's where we're gonna try to attack. The water in the basement, the electrical, the sprinklering, the paint, the deck and the, um, the, the railing.
We'll have it floating again.
Believe me, you're gonna get my best shot at trying to get this boat to where it needs to be.
Okay.
It's been a personal challenge and I'm accepting it as best I can.
I was on the board in the mid-nineties, we still had water in the basement then.
Well, but the issue is, you've got electrical contractors that are saying like, I'm not gonna send my guys or gals down in that boat to do electrical work if, if that water's still there. So we have to identify, A, what's the source of it, how do we pump it out, where do we pump it to?
Bob's got pumps, let Bob pump it out.
Yeah, maybe not be a permanent.
He took all his money yesterday.
Borrow him from Creighton.
Yeah.
You said you'd do that yesterday.
It's a work in progress, I, I'll do everything I can in a, in a prompt timeframe as best I can.
I didn't realize this is, you were work, alright, good.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Right, and for the next one, it's really, I think we can do it in three minutes and twenty-two seconds.
Well, that's good, we're done at nine o'clock, since we started at six fifteen.
So, the, the next topic, or, or, Your Honor, can we move on to the next topic, is that good? Do you guys, do you have any more questions on CFP? Yes, ma'am. Or do we need a motion for?
Would you like a motion or resolution to get public?
I, I've got a question before we do that, if we're gonna move to the next topic.
Wait, what are we doing?
And it's just a real small piece, um, I think if this came maybe from one of your, uh, previous, uh, FY eighteen. That dredging that was, um, was it like fifty thousand or something like that, maybe that was. There, there was two pieces to that.
By the, by candlelight?
Yes.
Yes, and so Jason had.
There was two pieces of maintenance dredging that was always kind of a, every other year supposed to be done, and then. Uh, before Jessica left, she had a three hundred or some odd thousand dollar piece. Maybe it was five hundred thousand total cost.
Yep.
I guess the eight point, eighteen point one references the eighteen point one above, but they're not really the same dredging project.
Yeah, so that, I basically rolled that into that piece for opening up the, the north end of Joyce's, so that. It was three, she, I think it was broken out three hundred K-ish, not just five hundred, so I, so I kept that three hundred, but I double tapped by saying, opening the north end of Joyce's Slough. Or dredging.
Okay.
Or it could be a combo of both.
I was reading that and said, you know, this will be done in the next few weeks, of course that was last fall or whatever, but that's not really the.
No, that dredging there was by candlelight, and that was for, because we had the zebra mussels.
Right.
Can't believe I just said that in public, yes, the zebra mussels, so, but that is now dredged, and the plan, we do have some plans. To finish that platform, so when the boat, the American Queen comes in, it can actually sit down, and what I'm talking about. Is where you do the walking rail over to the candlelight, about one-third of the way as you're walking from the little visitor center. Down there would be the platform where the, the gate would actually, uh, land on for a walk-in. So yes, I, I would like to ask with a caveat, uh, we know we're moving this for a public hearing, but also there's still gonna be a lot more. Discussion on what things make the list, but we need to get it set for public hearing so we can bring it back and discuss those things, so I'd like to have a motion to move it.
And you want the public hearing on January thirtieth?
Yes, sir. Oh, we want to set the public hearing on January thirty, I'm sorry, we would like to set.
You wanna move this to set a public hearing on January thirty? That the public.
For February thirteenth.
For February thirteenth.
Yeah.
That way that we've had time to look at the budget.
Lot more time to move it around and.
And we're getting laptops?
Uh, actually, more like a tablet type device. So you wouldn't have, you won't be able to do this.
But you can print out if you want to.
Yeah, you can so print out.
That'd be nice, I.
So do we have a, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we had a motion in a second, is there any other questions or discussion?
Oh, left, okay.
Hearing none, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alasy.
Yes.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Our next item is the Clinton Col- Clinton County Area Solid Waste Agency, also known as the CCASWA. And Landfill Twenty-Eight E Agreement.
And as I say, you're only as good as your teammates, like, uh, you know, awesome department heads and awesome employees of the city, but I, you know, this was, uh. Part of the study there was done by the lady who's sitting behind me, Laura Legis. Um, she's here just for backup support, cause I, basically, the bottom line on this is, she spent. A good amount of time on determining, on the slide here, as you can see on the screen, is. Remaining at the Clinton County Area Solid Waste Agency, the CCASWA. Doing direct haul to another location or building a transfer station. Let me cut to the chase and give you the bottom line. Recommend we stay right where we are. Subject to your questions. Okay, I knew that was coming, oh darn it. Alright, so what this is, is basically taking the study that Laura did, um, and then some sidebars with Laura and I. We took the three different, um, courses of action, remaining, direct haul or build a transfer station. And we looked at these categories and I'll walk you left to right. A comprehensive plan, I'm gonna come back to what that means. Liabilities, increase in staffing, negative impact on community. Tipping fee, solid waste charges, yard waste charges, recycling charges, outlets for other waste and cost. So the best value on each one of those categories could be a one, the middle value a three and the worst value a five. So the, the low number, number comes out to the best course of action, in this case sixteen is, this is objective with subjectivity on it. But sixteen was the low for remain at the CCASW. And just for backdrop, the mayor and I have had the honor to be at the last four, four meetings. We have really great synergy going on right now, um, they're, they're looking at a transfer site for recycling. Um, they're working super together, we even had a good Christmas party where we got some good.
Shouting just stopped.
Yeah, no, there's no shouting allowed, cause I can't be in meetings where shouting, I just, I can only get my vein up a little bit, so, no shouting. Um, but no, it's been good conversations, um, it's really a good group that's out there, um, to steer the county and all the cities. Um, you know, forward and, and, and really as a team treating this as their, this, their landfill. And that's a, a big piece too, so, let's just take a time and we'll, we'll walk the dog real quick here. So, what that means is. As we look at a comprehensive plan is, you know, it's put in the hands of the CCASW to provide what you do for everything in your city. If you were to pick up right now and leave and go somewhere else and do a transfer or a direct haul. You're still liable for everything we left, I, I know I'm jumping to liabilities, but it's on the bottom, you're still liable for everything that sits in the hole out here. That we put there for years, right? So, that comprehensive plan, you can see it's fifteen to twenty thousand, but that's on the low side, large side it could be thirty thousand or up. And then you have to do updates that continuously, that is part of our plan, we're already in, and we, that cost is part of being a member. Um, of good standing, actually, for, since nineteen seventy-two, um, at the landfill. The liability pieces, this is where as you start to move. Not only liabilities for what you've already put in the landfill, but then what the future pieces would be as you do that too. From a transfer standpoint or even a direct haul. Direct haul seems nice, but then when you do direct haul. There could be also increase in staffing for that. Because now you're just not running out Thirteenth Avenue, which will be a nice new street here come next year. Um, to take out the, the solid waste, the, the yard waste, the, the recycling. Um, but now you're going somewhere else and you're gonna have to drive there to do it, and you're putting more wear and tear on that. Uh, transfer station, now you're basically, you're, you're forming a whole new element that doesn't exist today. So you're talking about not only the building, uh, the cost for maintenance of the building, the staff to run the facility. The trucks that would have to be the correct trucks to come in, dump off, and then where are you gonna take that? And then there's a lot more, when we get into Corps of Engineers stuff, DNR requirements. Just to be able, it's not just being able to have a nice garage, bring some trash in there and then move it to the next place, there's a lot of rules and regulations that go in that. And the next piece really is the negative impact on the surrounding community, you know. I'm gonna get in some numbers and, and estimates, you know, but we are fifty-five percent of the county, Clinton, City of Clinton's fifty-five percent. So we pay fifty-five percent into what is the closing cost in the cell structure, the AKA shortcut name for a head tax. Um, but with that is, if we were to leave, most likely what happened is the landfill would end up closing. And then all the small communities around the area would have to figure out another, another way to do it. Now, could they do that with contracting? Sure, but their rates might go up, cause now those contractors have to haul it elsewhere for their way, et cetera. So that's why we say with a, a team sport like this, you know, we're in, we, we should be in it for the haul, no pun intended. Um, with our, our fellow cities throughout the county. Um, private landfill, there's tipping fees, yes, they'd be less, our tipping fees are forty-four dollars when we tip. And that's for yard waste and that's also for solid waste. Um, we do, currently don't have tipping fees for recycling, um, cause we're taking to Scott, so, um.
I think they didn't pay for yard waste.
Well, it's all rolled on the.
It, well, it depends, if, if we take a load in, it could be in a load, if it's separate from, like the rideaways, it depends on how Creighton's guys do it. If it's mixed in together, it's gonna be weighed and that's gonna be a.
But if we take, if we do our second pickup every day, like we do with the green containers. That should be pure yard waste that we shouldn't be charged for.
Creighton? Yeah, that's correct. Yep, um, and, and, and really what it, what it is, is there's, uh, when we talked about this with, uh, the group out at the landfill. You know, there is a lesser charge for some commercial and industry tipping fee out there, but, you know. He's, it still has to be a business that's, you know, barely getting over a dollar when it's, you know, all said and done to be able to pay everything, so that's part of the tipping fee pieces, so. Um, I lost my train though, I was gonna say is, you gotta think about this, and not to steal some, some notes that the mayor had. Um, but I will, is, so we had a hundred and five tons of recycling in the first three months, increase of a hundred and five tons. In theory, what you could do is a hundred and five times forty-four, you're not paying that, right? Um, we also dropped, which was weird, we had a weird November, we, Creighton's gang had like a hundred and thirty tons in October and December. Drop in solid waste, but we had an increase of sixty tons in November, we think it's, all the snowbirds before they left got all their trash out, we don't, we're not sure. We, we can't figure it out, he says.
Christmas packaging that can't be recycled.
Beforehand, I don't know. Um, but the bottom line is, when you increase recycling by a hundred and five tons and you decrease, just in three-month period, decrease solid waste by sixty tons, that change your books a lot. Um, and that's very useful, and we think, um, the mayor and I think we're actually, um. Very feasible that the transfer point could be set up for the county for recycling. Um, cause of late, we just, we had a, uh, the ability to go down to Bob's place there at the RWRF, cause they'd cleaned out the stuff for the year. Um, taken it out to the fields, and so we had a spot that we could use a temporary transfer station, but we was electing to drive it down each day, so it's gonna up our cost a bit, but. Once again, once you set up a facility to transfer, then you have all those costs that come along with that as well. So, and then on, on solid waste, you know, we just talked about moving that from there, we also, we have no tipping fee, as the mayor said. More importantly, because we provide the, the stormwater runoff, we provide that to be able to go into, um, the wastewater facility. So that's a cost that we actually do a, a little quid pro quo, so we could dump our yard waste and. I think Creighton may correct me, but I think in one month when he was doing rideaways, he literally had two hundred thirty-eight thousand pounds of brush that we took from Mill Creek. In just like two-week period, it was astronomical what they were clearing out of there, and then we have to take it somewhere. So, to be able to take that, not have to dump that with a tipping fee is, is really awesome. And then so, you know, really overall, you know, we, we haven't seen as much as we'd like, uh, we've been working with the. You know, even though the stock market appears to be up, the commodities market I guess doesn't follow for cardboard, I think it's cause of the announcement, Amazon's looking to use other things besides cardboard. Um, but some of the, uh, commodities are actually down right now, so we're, we're only getting around four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars where we thought we might be getting a thousand dollars. Um, so we're taking a look at that, but we're working close with, uh, Scott County. Um, outlets for other waste, so when you, when you don't have the comprehensive plan and you have to go elsewhere. All those things that the public right now can drive out Thirteenth Avenue and drop off, they might pay a dollar or two extra or, you know, two fifty for a computer. They, they'll have to go somewhere else, because we as a city are responsible for everything that's within the city. And we have to then have a place that's not there, because we're no longer under a comprehensive plan for that to then take it somewhere else. Could you probably sneak in a couple times? Brad'd probably let you, but that's not what's supposed to happen, you're supposed to have that under, under your comprehensive plan, know where you take those items, whether it be a large screen TV or whatever it might be. Um, the other piece is, you know, on the direct hauling with DNR, there's other things that come up because of. The distance you're traveling, everything else with, you're talking about solid waste. Um, they prefer to you be close to home, yes, we know that there's, there's folks out there that will line haul solid waste great distances, but they prefer to have it a short distance as well. So. What are your questions? I'm gonna jump back to the top. What are your questions, that was very quick, but on, overall on the, really the decision-making process on why to remain at the CCASWA?
I heard, just a quick comment or question, I guess. You said that even if we were to leave, and that's not really a, a good option, but. You said the citizens may be able to go out there once or twice, but wouldn't they be, just be treated as the county citizens at that point?
They, they should be treated as county, but.
The county's still paying for the citizens that technically.
No, but because of the.